To order here on Monday, January 13th at 7:00 PM. A roll call, looks like we're missing Council members Holstrom and Council members Cook this evening. We need oath of office.
Mayor?
All right.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Dwayne Poppy.
I, Dwayne Poppy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the Office of Mayor of the City of Osseo.
Of the Office of Mayor of the City of Osseo.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can have your sign here. Mr. Mayor Torres?
I, Nicholas Torres.
I, Nicholas Torres.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can have your sign here. Mr. Mayor Torres?
I, Nicholas Torres.
I, Nicholas Torres.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can have your sign here. Mr. Mayor Torres?
I, Nicholas Torres.
I, Nicholas Torres.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can have your sign here. Mr. Mayor Torres?
I, Nicholas Torres.
I, Nicholas Torres.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
Of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Osseo.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, now official roll call. Yes, we're missing Councilmember Holstrom and Councilmember Cook.
It looks like this is your first meeting.
Exactly. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
All right, thank you. Look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Double.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, it's three to zero. All right, consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? If not, we look for a motion.
Motion approval.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, it's three to zero. All right, consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? If not, we look for a motion.
Motion approval.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, it's three to zero. Thank you. B, approved tobacco license at AKWANAS LLC doing business as the Downtown Osseo Tobacco Shop.
Mayor and Council, the owner, Mohammed Lulu, applied for a new tobacco and edible cannabinoid product license for AKWANAS LLC doing business as Downtown Osseo Tobacco Shop located at 529 Central Avenue. He did not indicate any other establishments. Everything was reviewed for the address location, which had a prior business of the same in it, and so everything has passed, and it looks like it's ready to be approved.
Okay. And if there's any public comment on this one, feel free. Okay, no public comment. We look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new tobacco and edible cannabinoid products license for AKWANAS LLC DBA Downtown Osseo Tobacco Shop.
Got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the tobacco and cannabinoid license. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, it's three to zero. Thank you. B, approved tobacco license at AKWANAS LLC doing business as the Downtown Osseo Tobacco Shop.
Mayor and Council, the owner, Mohammed Lulu, applied for a new tobacco and edible cannabinoid product license for AKWANAS LLC doing business as Downtown Osseo Tobacco Shop located at 529 Central Avenue. He did not indicate any other establishments. Everything was reviewed for the address location, which had a prior business of the same in it, and so everything has passed, and it looks like it's ready to be approved.
Okay. And if there's any public comment on this one, feel free. Okay, no public comment. We look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new tobacco and edible cannabinoid products license for AKWANAS LLC DBA Downtown Osseo Tobacco Shop.
Got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the tobacco and cannabinoid license. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, it's three to zero. All right, 8C, support a respectful workplace resolution.
Mayor and Council, whereas the City of Osseo is committed to promoting a positive work environment in which all employees, volunteers, applicants, contractors, vendors, commissioners, appointed officials, elected officials, and members of the public are treated with respect and dignity, and whereas the Council holds itself, its appointed officials, commissioners, contractors, vendors, volunteers, applicants, and employees to a high standard of conduct, and whereas the city seeks to provide a professional atmosphere where personnel and professional excellence is fostered, and whereas the city finds effective policy and procedures coupled with respectful workplace training will assist in preventing harassment and supporting individuals who believe they are being harassed to come forward and ensure a problem is addressed quickly and effectively, and whereas discrimination and harassing behaviors disrupt the workplace are often unlawful and detract from the productivity and effectiveness of city staff and officials in conducting the important work we do on behalf of our residents, and whereas it is the city's expectation if someone is being harassed, he or she will be supported and treated with respect, and the inappropriate behavior will be addressed, and whereas the city will provide a reporting process and a means to address discrimination and harassment, and whereas harassing workplace behaviors will not be tolerated nor will retaliation for reporting a complaint or for participating in an investigation. Now, therefore be it resolved by the City of Osseo, Hennepin County, Minnesota as follows: This council supports a respectful workplace culture and will work to create a harassment-free environment for all employees, volunteers, applicants, contractors, vendors, elected officials, appointed officials, commissioners, and members of the public in the city.
All right, thank you. For a motion to support the respectful workplace.
I'd make a motion to support the resolution supporting a respectful workplace.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Torres to support the respectful workplace resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. All right, Attorney Teaching.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number one of the new year. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes, three to zero. All right, 8D, approve 2025 city appointments and designations. Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I talked to the city administrator about this earlier today. One of the appointments that, as we get down in the middle of the page, under other appointments, Northwest Community, excuse me, Northwest Suburbs Cable Commission, Cable Communications Commission, I've served on that for, I don't know, probably 13 years now, and I think that since we're appointing for hearings, you probably, I'd like to be considered to continue my service there and just add myself to that appointment on this agenda.
Northwest Suburban Cable Communications Commission?
Correct.
Okay, yep. You've done good work there, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution adopting 2025 city appointments and designations with the addition.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the 2025 city appointments and designations with noted changes. Is there a second?
A second with noted changes.
Okay, second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, Attorney Teaching, please.
Resolution number two. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes, three to zero. All right, 8E, affirm council staff responsibilities.
Mayor and Council, resolution affirming council and staff responsibility, whereas the Osseo City Council is composed of five individuals, all of whom have other occupations, duties, and responsibilities, and whereas the individuals who serve on this council must depend on the city's staff to provide them with a great amount of background information, data, and expertise to aid in determining issues, developing policy, and administering the council's responsibilities in a fair and impartial manner, and whereas it is the city administrator's responsibility to recommend hiring and employing people who can and will provide the best possible advice to the council and who can and will serve the public interest in an exemplary professional manner, and whereas it is the desire of city council to continue the strong favorable working relationship it enjoys with the city administrator and city staff. Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Osseo, Hennepin County, Minnesota, that the city administrator and staff are instructed to continue developing and transmitting to the council recommendations, research, and information based upon their experience and best professional judgment, and are further instructed and encouraged to be forthright, honest, and candid in developing and transmitting such recommendations and information, keeping in mind that their and our sole purpose is to serve the public interest. This council pledges that no staff member shall suffer recrimination for acting in a forthright, honest, and candid manner in protecting and promoting the public interest. This council further pledges that it will carry out its responsibilities as intended and established by federal, state, and local statutes and ordinances, and will do so in a fair and impartial manner. Any city official or employee elected or appointed who has found to have used their position in a self-serving manner designed or having such effect to promote their own financial interest or the financial interest of a friend, associate, business, employer, or relative instead of the public interest shall be subject to censure, possible removal from office, and prosecution in accordance with federal, state, and city laws. The simple intent of this resolution is to remind each of us, council and staff, that we exist in a public office or employment to serve the public interest and not to promote or serve individual interests. In carrying forth this purpose, council and staff are dependent upon each other to most effectively and fairly transact the city's business and must do so in a forthright, honest, and candid manner. This resolution shall be kept on file in the city clerk's office and shall be returned to the new city council for consideration at the beginning of each new year. A copy shall be distributed to employees following its adoption.
Good, thank you. For a motion to affirm council staff responsibilities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd talk to the city administrator about this earlier today. One of the appointments that, as we get down in the middle of the page, under other appointments, Northwest Community, excuse me, Northwest Suburbs Cable Commission, Cable Communications Commission, I've served on that for, I don't know, probably 13 years now, and I think that since we're appointing for hearings, you probably, I'd like to be considered to continue my service there and just add myself to that appointment on this agenda.
Northwest Suburban Cable Communications Commission?
Correct.
Okay, yep. You've done good work there, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution adopting 2025 city appointments and designations with the addition.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the 2025 city appointments and designations with noted changes. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, Attorney Teaching, please.
Resolution number two. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes, three to zero. All right, number eight F, Osseo 150 Year Celebration Update. Welcome. Excited, we're finally here, after many years, 150 of them.
Good to see you smiling, everybody's red. I was going to wear this, but it got a little warm back there. But this is, I've got this on. This is our seal from our summer, it's really a T-shirt, but I pulled it over. And this is our latest thing, which is fantastic. It's a hoodie, like so.
Nice.
And zipped, and it's great.
Then you also have long-sleeved T-shirts with that same logo.
Pardon?
You also have long-sleeved T-shirts with that same logo.
Yes, right. But I don't have that.
Yep.
Okay, so I am here just to bring you up to date on what we're doing. What's really great is the enthusiasm that's coming from the council. I know tonight, not everybody's here, but I'm thinking maybe, I don't know, your next meeting or something, that you could just have some sort of a motion or a resolution that just says we're supporting the entire effort of the 150th, because it isn't just the committee. It's the city council, it's the Lions Club, it's the Legion, the school district itself is having its 100th this year, and we're sort of starting to connect with them. Their actual event is going to be one day after the first graduation of the high school in June, so it'll be interesting. You have in your packet, I won't go over it, because I know you've got a lot to do tonight, but this is, the kickoff is the baking contest, I don't know now. Mark, are you going to be at the baking contest?
My wife told me I was going to be there.
Okay, that's good. Okay, and we've got cakes, we've got entries, so it'll be an interesting thing. Going back to '24, I think you've got bullets there to see what we did in 2024. A lot going on then, and there was a lot of organization on how we would roll into 2025, so now you see what we've got, events planned for 2025, and we're trying to do one month at a time, a specific activity, but within that period, we're also going to be dealing with selling our merchandise, our T-shirts, our shirts, and getting input from people on what they see and what they want in this celebration. It's amazing how the people have sort of come out from the wall saying what they like. I get at least three times a week, somebody either at the house or calling me to tell me about something that they're interested in. The thing that we're pushing them toward is, in the book that we're working on, and that book should be finished, we should hope, we were supposed to be finished by the end of January, but we had our meeting last week, and we said, no way is that going to be done. We've got too much coming in yet. There's one section called Recollections and Reflections, and it's really interesting because people will say, well, gee, are you going to talk about when we had COVID? Or are you going to talk about when Y2K came about? And so all we tell them, because we can't write it, we're not writing all of this stuff, we're pulling stuff in, we have to write on some of it, but we're just telling them, if you've got something to think about, give it to us, we'll get it in. It's in a section called Reflections. But the book now, it's going to be big, it's over 200 pages now.
Oh, wow.
And we don't have any of, we've got like probably, what would you say, a third left to come in.
Oh, wow.
It's an amazing thing, and it's just, everybody's just rolling in. I'm glad you got your stuff in today.
Yes.
All we need now is your signature.
Yeah.
But anyway, we hope to get that, we're really pushing to get that done by at least drawing a line and saying, okay, that's it, we can't take anymore, we've just got to get this done, this is the deadline, we're going to, then we go into editing and paginating and getting it off to the publisher, and we're hoping to have that done by mid-February. That's a challenging date, but for sure, we want to gear toward that. So when that's out of the way, then we zero in on all of these other events that are coming each month. Some of them are pretty well solidified, some of them are in flux because we can't get going on them until spring, till the thaw. But that's about where we are. We're planning the ceremony for, right after the Lions Roar Parade on September 6th, and we have letters set up to the, starting with the governor and state level and the U.S. representatives and senators, and that's out, to get that, and hopefully, they'll be there. We're working with both the Lions and the Legion on the site. We had, we've had the site, we thought the site would be right at Third Street where they have all the activity after the parade where they're, because they have a bandstand. But then we got to thinking, you know, this year specifically, Lions Roar is always there, and it's a huge event, but this is something extra special, and so we thought about moving it back to the park and having banners and everything else. The Legion was saying, well, they'd have the colors, well, they do that anyway, but the competition, we had a table at Lions Roar, and the people just throng in there after the parade for the food, the beer, the gambling, the kiddy stuff, and the thought occurred to me at the time, I thought, how would somebody really want to concentrate on just having a short ceremony with Osseo with all that other stuff going on? And so we're sort of thinking it through. We haven't totally solidified it yet, but your input would be great, you know, thinking about it, we've got time. Anyway, so these are the different months. We've updated our signs for the, that have been around with the businesses, so, because it says 2025 will be coming, it's here now, so we've got that going, and we've heard from the businesses, the business community has been fantastic, and we get feedback from them because people will come in and see those signs and say, oh, I remember when the 100th occurred. And so there's just this enthusiasm that's starting, and I hope it keeps going, which I think it will. And I think that is about it. I'm guessing that as we move toward details of some of these things coming up in these various months, we may end up requesting, I'm guessing it would be at the Lions, at the ceremony, maybe the closing of the street or something like that, but you're dealing with that anyway with the Lions, so. There's, January, February, March, and then April, May, June, when we start getting into May, things start revving up even more, and if you look at June, it's really a wild month. We're not only having tables and setups at each of these events, I mean, there's Father Hennepin Days, there's Maple Grove Chalk Fest, which we just, they said, you get a table out there. I guess that thing has become a national kind of a thing, they come from all over the country to get ideas for, so that's going to be an interesting thing. But anyway, we've got a lot going on, and I guess that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
But I sure appreciate getting revved up.
Thank you for all your work. The committee's done a great job.
That what?
Committee's done a great job. Hats off to all of you. Thank you.
We have a website, by the way.
Oh, really?
Yes. It's, we forget, I almost forgot that. It's Osseomen, O-S-S-E-Omen, 150th.com, and you can go to the website, and you can move over to Facebook, or if you're on Facebook, you can flip over to the website, they're interchangeable. And so our webmaster is really our webmaster. Any other questions?
Questions, council?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everyone in the committee and all their work. Thank you. Looking forward to it. It's going to be a great year. All right, 8G, accept donations.
Mayor and Council, resolution accepting donation of the City of Osseo, whereas the Osseo City Council is generally authorized to accept contributions of real and personal property pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 465.03, and whereas the city council agrees that said donation would be a benefit, of benefit to the citizens of Osseo, and whereas the following has proposed this contribution to the City of Osseo and the donation be used for the specific purpose as indicated below. Osseo Police and Fire Staff $30 Shop With A Cop Event, Holiday Station Store $205 Shop With A Cop Event, Masonic Lodge Eastern Star $500 Shop With A Cop Event.
Thank you. Look for a motion to accept donations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to adopt resolution accepting donations of the City of Osseo.
Right, we had a motion by Councilmember Schultz to accept donations, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Say none, Attorney Teaching, please.
Thank you, this is resolution number four. Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes, three to zero. All right, 9, public hearings, no public hearings this evening. Number 10, old business. 10A, North Oaks Ditch Dredging Update. Riveting.
The audience left, they missed our stage, because I mean, this is
I thought they were here for this.
This is great information.
The ditch dredging update.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, so the ditch drainage project, I got caught on that already, thank you. On the next slide here, we have a map that shows the proposed extents of the project. Is the clicker up here?
Coach's clicker.
I can go through it for you.
Okay, thank you so much. So, we got to a point with coordination with the West Mississippi Watershed Management Commission after talking to the DNR with the project. The proposed project extends, as it stands right now, is in orange, just kind of hugging along the apartment complex through there, and then to, towards 169 there. The section towards 169, that's all a piped system through there, so the open drainage is the portion to the north and west of there. Through the discussions with the Watershed Management Commission and looking at what exists in the drainage ditch today, there is not a significant amount of erosion present within the channel. The sediment in the ditch area is conveyed in through the stormwater pipe that goes into, that drains to the ditch. So with that, the Watershed Management Commission indicated that it would not be eligible for a 50/50 cost share because it's missing that component for water quality improvement. This would be determined more of a maintenance project to just go and dig that sediment out versus fixing an erosion issue. So when we discovered that, took a step back and took a look at other tributary areas to the ditch to see if It's an amazing thing, and it's just, everybody's just rolling in. I'm glad you got your stuff in today.
Yes.
All we need now is your signature.
Yeah.
But anyway, we hope to get that, we're really pushing to get that done by at least drawing a line and saying, okay, that's it, we can't take anymore, we've just got to get this done, this is the deadline, we're going to, then we go into edit, to editing and paginating and getting it off to the publisher, and we're hoping to have that done by mid-February. That's a challenging date, but for sure, we want to gear toward that. So when that's out of the way, then we zero in on all of these other events that are coming each month. Some of them are pretty well solidified, some of them are in flux because we can't get going on them until spring, till the thaw. But that's about where we are. We're planning the ceremony for, right after the Lions Roar Parade on September 6th. And we have letters set up to the, starting with the governor and state level and the US representatives and senators. And that's out, to get that, and hopefully, they'll be there. We're working with both the Lions and the Legion on the site. We had, we've had the site, we thought the site would be right at Third Street where they have all the activity after the parade where they're, because they have a bandstand. But then we got to thinking, you know, this year specifically, Lions Roar is always there, and it's a huge event, but this is something extra special. And so we thought about moving it back to the park and having banners and everything else. The Legion was saying, well, they'd have the colors. Well, they do that anyway, but the competition, we had a table at Lions Roar, and the people just throng in there after the parade for the food, the beer, the gambling, the kitty stuff. And the thought occurred to me at the time, I thought, how would somebody really want to concentrate on just having a short ceremony with Osseo, with all that other stuff going on? And so we're sort of thinking it through. We haven't totally solidified it yet, but your input would be great, you know, thinking about it, we've got time. Anyway, so these are the different months. We've updated our signs for the, that have been around with the businesses, so, because it says 2025 will be coming, it's here now. So we've got that going. And we've heard from the businesses, the business community has been fantastic. And we get feedback from them because people will come in and see those signs and say, oh, I remember when the 100th occurred. And so there's just this enthusiasm that's starting, and I hope it keeps going, which I think it will. And I think that is about it. I'm guessing that as we move toward details of some of these things coming up in these various months, we may end up requesting, I'm guessing it would be at the Lions, at the ceremony, maybe the closing of the street, or something like that. But you're dealing with that anyway with the Lions, so. There's, January, February, March, and then April, May, June, when we start getting into May, things start revving up even more. And if you look at June, it's really a wild month. We're not only having tables and setups at each of these events, I mean, there's Father Hannipin Days, there's Maple Grove Chalk Fest, which we just, they said, you get a table out there. I guess that thing has become a national kind of a thing. They come from all over the country to get ideas for. So that's going to be an interesting thing. But anyway, we've got a lot going on, and I guess that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
But I sure appreciate getting revved up.
Thank you for all your work. The committee's done a great job.
That what?
Committee's done a great job. Hats off to all of you. Thank you.
We have a website, by the way.
Oh, really?
Yes. It's, we forget, I almost forgot that. It's Osseomen, O-S-S-E-Omen, 150th.com. And you can go to the website, and you can move over to Facebook, or if you're on Facebook, you can flip over to the website. They're interchangeable. And so our webmaster is really our webmaster.
[laughing]
Any other questions?
Questions, council?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everyone in the committee and all their work. Thank you. Looking forward to it. It's going to be a great year. All right, 8G, accept donations.
Mayor, council, resolution accepting donation of the city of Osseo, whereas the Osseo City Council is generally authorized to accept contributions of real and personal property pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 465.03, and whereas the city council agrees that said donation would be a benefit, of benefit to the citizens of Osseo, and whereas the following has proposed this contribution to the city of Osseo and the donation be used for the specific purpose as indicated below. Osseo Police and Fire Staff, $30, Shop With A Cop Event. Holiday Station Store, $205, Shop With A Cop Event. Masonic Lodge, Eastern Star, $500, Shop With A Cop Event.
Thank you. Look for a motion to accept donations.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt resolution accepting donations to the city of Osseo.
Right. We had a motion by Councilmember Schultz to accept donations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See, non-attorney teacher, please.
Thank you. This is resolution number four. Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy?
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, nine, public hearings, no public hearings this evening. Number 10, old business. Ten A, North Oaks Ditch Dredging Update. Riveting.
The audience left. They missed Carol State, because I mean, this is-
I thought they were here for this.
This is great information.
The ditch dredging update.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, so the ditch drainage project, I got caught on that already. Thank you. On the next slide here, we have a map that shows the proposed extents of the project. Is the clicker up here?
Coach's clicker.
I can go through it for you.
Okay, thank you so much. So, we got to a point with coordination with the West Mississippi Watershed Management Commission after talking to the DNR with the project. The proposed project extends, as it stands right now, is in orange, just kind of hugging along the apartment complex through there, and then to, towards 169 there. The section towards 169, that's all a piped system through there. So the open drainage is the portion to the north and west of there. Through the discussions with the Watershed Management Commission and looking at what exists in the drainage ditch today, there is no, not a significant amount of erosion present within the channel. The sediment in the ditch area is conveyed in through the stormwater pipe that goes into, that drains to the ditch. So with that, the Watershed Management Commission indicated that it would not be eligible for a 50/50 cost share because it's missing that component for water quality improvement. This would be determined more of a maintenance project to just go and dig that sediment out versus fixing an erosion issue. So when we discovered that, took a step back and took a look at other tributary areas to the ditch, to see if, you know, to bring forward to the council and see if there would be a ditch project if the scope were to be expanded, to see if that would be made eligible. So in red, on the, in the packet, and also on the slide here, shows another ditch section that drains through the backyards of the properties, not on the backyard, to the north of the backyards of the properties on Third, and then again on the west side of the cemetery, and then potentially a storm sewer connection to that ditch section on the south side of the Osseo Education Center. So we took a look at that, too, and the ditch section through there, again, is no evidence of erosion either, so we can't look at that as a water quality improvement. So then the next component was, well, what would it take to be a water, a project that would provide water quality improvements? And that would require the construction of like a stilling basin or other feature to do that. So before, before moving forward with any plans, it was a good point to bring this back to council for direction. And I do have some slides here that we can just go through, just to show the council, and for those that are interested in learning more about the ditch project, what the existing conditions are. So on the top right hand of the slide, I have the location shown. So we're here on the north end of the ditch with the drainage coming in off of County Road 30, showing through there. So you can see that it's filling in, but we're just not seeing the evidence of erosion. And then moving to the next slide, again, we see the vegetation that's impacting some of the flow. So that would be part of the maintenance project, would be to remove the vegetation. And then on the next slide, we keep moving down through the channel. We're a little further south here, you see the channels filling, filling in through here. And the next slide, again, we're seeing a lot of the same thing, a lot of smaller trees that are starting to pop up through the ditch sections. And on the next slide, so here we see through the, as we're getting near the apartment complexes. And then on the next slide, again, more of the same, but just wanted to give council an idea of what's being seen through the ditch section on the next slide, please. And then here, you can see on the right side, we're entering that phase where the, it's a pipe section that goes east to 169. So on the next slide, and also in the packet, I have a summary of where we're at for anticipated project costs. We, at the outset of this project, when we were looking at the 50/50 cost share and doing some erosion control through the channel, we were looking at $250,000 budget. Understanding that this is more of a maintenance project, that meaning being taking out the sediment that's accrued within, that's within the ditch, we're looking more of a budget of $125,000, so approximately half. If the council wanted to take a look at water, water quality project, we would recommend that that budget would be somewhere between $250,000 to $300,000. So the net cost to the city would be $125,000 to $150,000. So we felt it was a good time to bring this back to council for a discussion on what would the council like to see moving forward. If a water quality project is pursued, we would need to get some more easements because we would need more area to build some of these features. And we would also be looking at an extended timeline, just to get that, those easements and further coordination with the Watershed District and the permitting agencies. So with that, happy to answer any questions. If the council were to look at just doing a straight-up maintenance project and giving that direction here this evening, our next step would be to bring plans and specifications to the council next month, and then get this out for quotes and award a contract to get that work done yet this spring. Of course, weather permitting. Minnesota always likes to throw us a little curveball with weather, but that would be the ideal timeline. So with that, Mr. Mayor, council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Okay, thank you for the presentation. So just a couple of quick questions. The, when you were talking about the easements, did these numbers reflect the cost of that? Because I'm assuming if we have to do the easements, that's going to be a taking. So that's the first question.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Torres, these numbers do not, they do not include any cost for easement acquisition. We assume that that would be a nominal effort as far as just to go and create the documentation required to get the easement, but that there would be no financial reimbursement for the easements.
It's an easement, it's not an acquisition.
Correct.
Two different things.
Correct. It's not, it wouldn't be a taking, it would be an easement.
Yes.
Okay. Second question. So with the numbers here, I'm looking at, we're maintenance, $125,000, no cost share. And then we do, if we add the water quality, which is going to be a really good enhancement potentially, those numbers almost look like, that, or is that reflecting the 50%? So the two, say, on the low end, the $250,000, is that the total cost? And then we would end up being on the hook for $125,000? Or does that represent that it's actually $500,000, and it's going to cost us $250,000?
Thank you for the question. When I was reading through this tonight, I was, I realized I should have provided some more clarification. So the $250,000 to $300,000 is the total anticipated budget. So the city's portion would be about, would be between $125,000 and $150,000.
So, yeah. Seems like you get, you know, $125,000, $125,000, we get the enhancement. I mean, that just kind of speaks for itself. Okay, thank you. Those were the only questions I had.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So, kind of along the same lines as what Councilmember Torres was talking about, if we go through and dredge that right now, probably one of the reasons that we're not having as much erosion as you might predict with the stormwater flowing through there is that there is vegetation there. And we wouldn't, I mean, I don't know, do we have any historical value, or any historical perspective on how that ditch has performed and how much that's filled in since the last time it was dealt with?
That's a good question. I, we would certainly be able to take a look at that. As you started taking sediment out of there, you could estimate how much of it had been deposited. I don't have that number in front of me, and I don't know that that was necessarily data that was collected in the field.
So my concern about doing the project without, is it, how's that pronounced, stilling basin?
A stilling basin.
So, if we took the vegetation out, brought that down, we're now going to be down to, we're not, we're not going to put concrete or bituminous in there, that's just going to be raw dirt ditch, right?
It would be, it would be removal of the sediment, it would be soil, and then you would look at stabilizing it with some sort of vegetation.
Okay.
Because you wouldn't want to leave the bare soil, that would erode.
Right. And so, I mean, looking at that, you know, it's kind of six one and half dozen of the other. So it makes sense to me to look into the stilling basin, simply because I know that the watershed is going to be concerned with that. And if we take that out, we are going to have some, maybe not erosion, but definitely having some soil, some other debris, you know, from people that blow their grass, for example, into the street that they're not supposed to. And the ability for us to get that collected before it gets in there, to me, makes a lot of sense regarding water quality downstream. So if we did decide to go with that route, I mean, it seems to me as if we have support from water management, or watershed, to help with that, correct?
That's correct. They've indicated a desire to do so.
So I think it makes, to be honest, I think it makes more sense for us to do a stilling basin. Would we have to do one or two?
I would have to defer, I think they would look at a couple of them, probably two.
Okay.
Just based on the length of the ditch.
Yeah. I think it makes sense to move ahead with that plan, and if for some reason that other aspect about matching falls apart, we can revert back. But I think it makes sense for us to move ahead with the stilling basin and the acquisition of easements and different things through there.
Then how often do those basins have to be cleaned?
It would, that's a good question. I would think that the, if you're looking at two, certainly the one upstream would be, would require more maintenance than the other one, because that would be burying the brunt, so to speak, of deposition. Gosh, how long would they go? Maybe 20 years? That's just, that's a guess?
Yeah, it's not like every couple of years, something.
Oh, no, no. You know, and you can certainly look at sizing, the size of them would certainly dictate some of that maintenance component, but we could, I would ask for an estimate on how long they would expect until the next maintenance project on those.
And if we did go, for that part, we do have, in the city, the capacity to clean those out pretty easily. I mean, our VAC truck is pretty, is pretty good for that, and I don't think it would be, it doesn't seem that it would be a very overly burdensome maintenance process, but probably require more in the beginning part than once the vegetation grows in and helps with the erosion there. But, I mean, so I don't really see that that's going to be a huge cost to us, since we already have the equipment here to do it. The only thing I would think is that maybe, I think we have some additional pipe additions that they could get deeper, because I don't know how deep that basin would actually be, but I think we could be able to get to it pretty easy. Do you have any feedback on that from Nick Wallbilly?
Yeah, we could certainly work with Public Works to that extent. And certainly, when we look at access to get to the stilling basins or any other, even the ditches that exist right now, not all of the ditch is within the existing easement, and that happens. It's constructed and it meanders out of the easement. And we would look at the restoring it to the path that it's currently taken. It doesn't seem like a worthwhile idea to go and move the ditch back into the easement, if it's already established in a certain area, and if we have property owners that are willing to work with us to go and get that cleaned out. So we would certainly look at doing that. And likewise, getting those easements, I don't anticipate that we would have any concerns, because you have a lot of pavement right up to the edge of that ditch through the, through the apartment complexes. And, you know, last year with that, with the street improvement project, we had a really great working relationship with the management of those apartment complexes. So I would anticipate that we would be able to continue doing that, and look to get something perhaps recorded against the property, so that in perpetuity, the city could have some assurances to be able to get in and maintain that ditch.
Someone like to make a motion?
I think, yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, the council's direction at this time is to look at a water quality improvement, and that, so I appreciate the direction. So we would simply move forward with watershed coordination as outlined in the packet. And if we have any other issues that are, questions that come up, in the meantime, I'd certainly bring those back to council, but we would just look to be pushing actual construction for maintenance and installation of any water quality features for next winter, as we move through these processes of design and getting easements and such. Will just take a little longer than what this construction season would allow for.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, number 11, new business, Lebanon A, approve first reading of cannabis zoning ordinance.
I'll take it. I can, I think I can.
I can give a little summary, too, when you-
Okay, perfect. Mayor, council, with the state of Minnesota legalizing cannabis and hemp sales, the city of Osseo had some options to amend its zoning code in some different ways. On 9/16 and 11/18, the Planning Commission had their questions asked about, we brought an ordinance forward, they made some changes, and they were, their questions were answered. At the December 16th Planning Commission meeting, the current draft ordinance was approved by the Planning Commission and sent to the Osseo City Council for reading and adoption. And then I'll let Mary kind of give a synopsis of this ordinance.
Sure. So, Mayor and council, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this as required. If you think back to our earlier discussions about cannabis, this zoning ordinance, we did get some input from the council about looking at the underlying uses associated with the types of cannabis businesses and placing them in the appropriate existing zoning districts. So essentially, you know, if you, if you look through the draft, the retail uses are being proposed to be placed in the CBD district, Central Business District. And we have proposal to put the transportation and wholesaling-type businesses within the highway commercial districts. And then in the manufacturing and industrial districts, adding, we added the cultivation, testing, manufacturing-type businesses as conditional uses, thinking that those types of businesses may require conditions to be placed on them. They will be subject to any of the performance standards set out in the city code, MPCA rules, and then also any administrative rules that ultimately will be passed and finalized by the state of Minnesota, a draft of which came out today, by the way.
Oh, really?
So we'll see. You know, we'll have to, it's going to be a process to get through that, and there may need to be changes to this in the future. We'll just have to evaluate that. I think it's going to be some time before the state's issuing licenses at this point, so I think we'll have a little bit of time. The other thing that this ordinance would do is, would prohibit cannabis businesses as home occupations. And then it also establishes the locations, the buffers that we talked about with the council and the Planning Commission. So it would prohibit cannabis businesses within 500 feet of a school, and then within 250 feet of residential treatment facilities, site park. And the reason we mention site park by name is that that's the only park in the city that has attractions for minors, and then also daycares. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if there are any. This is a first reading tonight, so we'll come back for a second reading at the next meeting.
Okay. Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. So, the cannabis retail business, is that currently specifically, I think as I'm looking here, proposed for only CBD? Or is that going to be, is that allowed in the C2 district as well, the highway commercial?
I believe the way the code reads is that anything in the highway commercial also includes anything allowed in the Central Business District.
What about the opposite of that? Does the Central Business District then by definition allow C2?
Don't, I can look, but I don't think so.
Because one of the things is that, you know, as we're moving ahead with our municipal dispensary, where the premier locations is going to, that we're evaluating currently is in the C2.
Mm-hmm.
And I wouldn't want to pass this that rules out that opportunity for us, because it just kind of hamstrings us. So to include retail in the C2, I believe should be added to this document. You all understand why I'm getting at with that?
I do. Right.
Is everybody okay with that?
Same thought I had.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay.
I'll review and confirm that, Councilmember Schultz. And if it's not included, we can, we can make that change.
Okay. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, if that's okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
On page seven, section eight, 153, page 043A4. At the behest of being hung up on words, I get hung up on words. And in four, it says at least 250 feet from any daycare. And my question is, what is the effect of, let's say, a license is issued, somebody starts operating a, an establishment, and then we know that daycare can kind of just pop up whenever, because people that have a home can apply for a daycare license, and now all of a sudden, somebody that lives two doors down, where it was once okay, now all of a sudden, stricture of the law, it's not, because it's within 250 feet of any daycare. I'm just looking for kind of the opinion of what effect does that hypothetical have, should that happen in the future, if it's written the way it's written?
You mean if the cannabis business opens first, and then the daycare moves in? Well, the cannabis business gets to stay.
Okay. And that's, I mean, that's written in here somewhere?
Well, that's just a principle of land use law. I mean-
Okay.
They're, they're an existing lawful use, and so if a daycare moved in within that buffer zone, that would be, you know, up to them, I guess, but the, but the business wouldn't be required.
wouldn't be required to relocate or move because the daycare opened up next door.
Fact, and the word I'm getting hung up on is, is any. So even though it says any, would that prevent somebody from, you know, litigating against it? And, and again, I'm just thinking in contingencies, let's say if somebody really is opposed to cannabis in the community.
Then they shouldn't open a daycare next door to a cannabis business.
Right. No, but they, I'm just thinking.
I understand what you're saying.
They could do just that to try to put a monkey wrench into everything. And even if we're right, and even if we win, it costs money to litigate and to defend something that you can defend. So, and again, I mean, that answers the question. I don't want to, you know, berate the point, but I'm just curious if the word, if it could say at least 250 feet from any existing daycare, would that make a difference and help support our position from a trying to deflect any type of litigation just by adding that one word?
Hmm.
That way, if somebody does it in the future, hey, too bad. Wasn't, you weren't existing at the time.
And then daycare, is that defined that it's?
Right. Daycare, daycare is a defined term.
Okay.
That's on page one of the ordinance. Yeah, I, I see your point. I, I mean, I think we could add that. I personally don't know that it adds much, but I think.
We, we do.
The converse to that is it doesn't hurt to add the word existing, right? Doesn't mess anything up by doing that. Or does it?
I don't think so. I guess I'd have to think through that a little bit with the implications of it. But I understand your point.
Mr. Mayor, I understand where Mr. Torres is getting. We do have some history with people interpreting things differently than it's intended. And then you start adding on layers of case law and different things like that. If that doesn't in any way, shape or form hamper it, I would be in support of like just looking into that, just to make sure that we're establishing that. And to that point, we don't have to, we don't have to exhaust resources when someone wants to challenge that. So if it, if it's okay, I mean, for the, because that would be, this is the first reading, right?
Correct.
So we could just, you know, come back for a second reading with those changes. That'd be great.
Okay. Will do.
That's all I had.
I mean, I guess the same rationale could apply to a residential treatment facility or a school or,
Yeah.
or any other use that's being, or a park.
And park is specifically called out as like sites park or was something like additional public parks, future parks.
Right.
Because if we, because there is the plan for Bourbon Park at some point in time to add a playground area there, at least in the current working plan. So that's at least covered in that one there. Because if we did that, then that would push a couple of people potentially out of that space. So.
Okay. I'll noodle on that and see if I can tweak that language a bit.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the updates to the Osseo zoning code in relation to cannabis and hemp business with noted changes as amended.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the first reading with noted changes as discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for their exhaustive work on this topic. Their, their ability to take and digest this stuff has made our life a lot easier than having to process through this ourselves at that level. So I just wanted to say thank you to them for their activities and, and their action on this.
Yes, thank you. Any further comments? Seen none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right. 11B, approve 2025 official council appointments.
Mayor and council, each year, the city council should discuss the various appointments to council committees and other boards. I've recently sent a few emails out asking for council preferences to the committees and boards, included a short description for each council members. Were encouraged to respond to my email with their preferences. City council should consider the appointments, discuss them. Motion to appoint council members to the various boards, committees, and other appointments via the attached resolution. So what you see in your council packet in front of you is the current listing of people. Obviously, there are some that are no longer on the council that are on this agenda item. But we're asking you to work through this as a group and come up with some sort of listing of where people will be. And each of you have kind of an email finalized. There was some stuff that came in late today that I wasn't able to get out to you as far as your appointments. And there's a list there. It should be in front of you.
Okay. So this document is the updated one?
That's the furthest updated as of today.
Okay.
The phone conversations. I had this, pretty late this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'll just read through these and see if this is what everyone was thinking. Acting Mayor Schultz, alternate acting mayor Hallstrom, economic development, Torres, Cook, Poppy Schultz, fire relief, Hallstrom, Cook, historical preservation, that'd be Torres, weed inspector, that's me, arts and communication, Torres, and we have one opening on that, budget and finance, Poppy and Schultz, human resources, Schultz and Torres, intergovernment, Torres and Hallstrom, park and rec, Cook with one open position there, public safety, Hallstrom and Torres, risk, Poppy Schultz, cannabis, Schultz and Cook. So we just need arts and park and rec.
And Mr. Mayor, the budget and finance has three names and two positions.
That's Poppy and Schultz.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, I'd like to ask Mr. Torres whether he would consider serving on the park and rec department or park and recs committee. I would volunteer for that, but I happen to know the chair pretty well, and I'd like to, to spare all of us from having both of us at the same.
Mr. Mayor, let me take a look and see how much I've signed up for. I have yours, historical, arts, HR, public safety.
I'm, I'm happy to put my name in for arts and communications.
Okay.
Since there's an opening there, I'm happy to jump in there.
Well, we do need historical, historical and park and rec. We have an opening now.
So historical, so there's, look, you're talking about historical preservation?
Yes.
So Torres is on there. It said we had one?
Oh, just one on that. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes. So we're looking for just park and rec.
His, Mr. Mayor, historically, what type of time commitment is there with parks and rec?
They're usually quarterly.
Quarterly?
Aren't they? That sound about right? Or as needed? It's not monthly for sure.
It's not monthly. I can look. I believe there are either four or five meetings set throughout the year. However, we don't have one every time that we have a placeholder date. It's only if there's business to be discussed those nights.
So it's a pretty, it's a pretty low impact.
The next meeting is in February.
I would say historical won't be much time, arts and communications won't be much time.
Hmm.
HR and public safety will be more.
I would be good with doing it with, with Councilmember Schultz's nomination recommendation with the little asterisk of if I'm finding that things are getting tough.
You can quit anytime. That's, that's been a precedent we set last year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay.
So I'll just read through these and make sure that we have them all. I don't know if we want to jot them down. Acting Mayor Schultz, alternate acting mayor Hallstrom, EDA, Torres, Cook, Poppy Schultz, fire relief, Hallstrom and Cook, historical preservation, Torres, weed inspector, Poppy, arts and communication, Torres and Schultz, budget and finance, Poppy and Schultz, HR, Schultz and Torres, intergovernmental, Torres and Hallstrom, park and rec, Cook and Torres, public safety advisory, Hallstrom and Torres, risk, Poppy and Schultz. Is that right?
And cannabis committee, which is on this.
Cannabis committee is Schultz and Cook.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So on the resolution, it looks like there's a backup for weed inspector?
And we approved that earlier. So that's Ryan.
Okay.
He's statutorily the weed inspector.
Yeah.
That just comes with the job.
Yeah.
But Officer Swanson does all the investigation.
Yeah.
The mayor.
No, that's good. I just wanted to make sure it was in the blank space.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just wanted to tell you too, that the cannabis committee kind of came out of nowhere in the last year or so. So that wasn't on this resolution. And so if you're going to make a motion to adopt it, if we can add that to the resolution, I believe. Is it on yours?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'm, somebody must have figured that out at my staff that I didn't see it. So I apologize.
It's on there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution adopting 2025 official city council appointments as stated.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Schultz to adopt the council appointments as read. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seen none? Attorney teacher?
Thank you. Resolution number five, Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor, Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right. C, approve Rum River Consulting contract.
Mayor, council, just give me one second. Let me catch up. Rum River Consultants have contracted with the city of Osseo to run a rental housing inspection services program since 2022. The current contract ended in December of 2024. This would just be a renewal of their contract. The contract would begin upon approval and signing and has a 60-day notification needed to end the contract. That's really one of the bigger parts of this contract between the last one and this current one is that it had like an end of year. It was only for a year this week. And we can, either, either side can get out of the contract with a 60-day notification. Rum River Consultants will act as an independent contractor and carry the necessary insurance before on the work outlined in the contract. The city will collect license and inspection fees from property owners and compensate Rum River Consultants 75% of those collected fees. I'm just asking the council to approve this contract with Rum River Consultants, which has also been reviewed by our city attorney.
We'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Rum River Consultants for rental housing inspection services program.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the Rum River Consulting contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion?
Yep. There's one question and it's ancillary and do not expect you to answer it. I would be interested in seeing how the recoveries work for this expense. So I'm, and I'm assuming the rental license fees go towards, we collect them and then pay them.
And pay them.
Yeah.
Okay.
We keep 25%. So offline, I'd just be interested in seeing kind of the, the historical numbers on that.
Okay.
And it's just an ask.
Sure.
Thank you.
I can do that for you.
That's all.
Any further discussion? Seen none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right. 11D, discuss proposal for state bonding request.
Assistant City Administrator Alicia Vickerman will be taking over this discussion.
Let's roll.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So for you tonight, we have three possible proposal drafts for state bonding requests. Some background on this is the city of Osseo has been seeking state bonding funds for various infrastructure projects over the last few legislative sessions. There have been approvals, but we have been unsuccessful in actually getting those funds back to Osseo for use. So through conversations with our legislature, legislators and the budget and finance committee, we're presenting three options for bonding requests. Based on the council's advice, we will come up with, come back with a resolution to a future meeting requesting a specific one of these scenarios for state funds. So just kind of go through what these are. Where it's the, the number that we've been looking to get back into the city is about $1.6 million. And the first option here is just going straight for that 1.6 being the minimum amount we have to spend. So the projects that would be included with that would be three one-sided blocks of Central Avenue paver replacements. This is something that we've partially done up to a certain point now, but we still have a remaining number of blocks to be completed. So in this scenario, again, working within those numbers, we're looking at the three worst sections that we have to replace. The next project would be the Public Works Building. All of the upgrades needed in that building, it's built in 2001. We definitely have some just regular maintenance type issues like the roof. And there are some safety, security issues, the gates that need some replacement, and just general better security for the building ventilation. And then also some added storage areas for salt and sand outside and an additional storage area on the building. And the third item in that just straight $1.6 million bonding request is some updates to the site park playground and sports surfaces. So the tennis courts and basketball courts. Those surfaces, as have been discussed quite a few times, have some just cracks, some divots, some things that make them not great for playing sports out there. And also, we want to see some, I believe we already have the lines drawn on the tennis courts for pickleball, but wanting to make sure that we have all those activities available there. And as for the playground equipment, I've given you here an image of Ashwood in Otsego. That's something that's kind of within that $200,000 budget that we're considering for an upgrade to the playground equipment. Playground equipment we have out there, some of those items are existing playground equipment from the 50s. They're chipping, rusting, just not great conditions for a healthy playground to let people of all ages and abilities go and play on. So we're looking to possibly invest a little bit of those funds back into site park. So that's the, the first possible proposal we could put forward. The second would be that plus a little bit more. Get this forward. So all those projects I just described, and then also adding in three more one-sided blocks of Central Avenue paver replacements. So that would get us up to a total of three full blocks or six sections. And then also the downtown water tower, the one that's right over City Hall here. We have some lead paint abatement that needs to be done, repairs to the ladder to make it safe to be accessible, and just some general structure work that needs to be done. And it is already on the National Historical Register. So it's something that we're at a point where we have to fix it in some way. And choosing to do it this way, this would be, the bonding request would be with matching funds. So the city would also be investing at least 50% on top of that $1.6 million. So that gets us up to about a $1.9 million in city funds that we would use toward. dollars in city funds that we would use toward, towards getting that bond. And it, it does look attractive, I think, to some of the legislators looking at these numbers does show that we're also putting in this investment here too. And another point of interest is that we have money set aside in the water fund that would really help us get up to our matching funds that we would need, along with other funds that I'm, I'm sure you all get into a little bit deeper. So after looking at those two options, um, and when Administrator Michelson and I met with Budget and Finance, we talked about what are just kind of the things that we would like to ask for? Everything really we could, we could think that Osseo could go to the state for additional funds. And what we came up with was a, a pretty big proposal. It came up to about 28 million, $44,000. I'm, I'm sure none of us are all that confident we could go and ask for this and get this, especially, especially not right now. But some of the highlights of what, um, that proposal would be asking for are, uh, new municipal campus, public safety building, public works building upgrades, replacement of all the remaining blocks of papers on Central Avenue, Boar Boom Park expansion, Site Park remodel, and the downtown historic water tower. So that would be our 28 million. And again, what we're looking for tonight is just some discussion on, um, what council thinks might be our, our best bet going forward and which, um, option you would like us to come back with a, a resolution in support of.
Council?
Mr. Mayor. Total new guy question. I'm going to finally play that card. So it'd, it'd be interesting for me to understand how, when these proposals are made and brought to the state legislature, how exactly, at a very, very high level, how they work compared to how it works in an annual budget in corporate. So an annual budget in corporate, you shoot for the moon and then you hope for the best and then you get what you get. But shooting for the moon doesn't necessarily preclude you from getting anything. It's not an all or nothing. How, again, at a very high level, how does that work when it comes to these proposals? Cause obviously just, it would be insane to go for the 28 million, especially with the economic environment right now. Um, but are we limited to only those other two? Or could we enhance one of them and then still hope to get that smaller amount? And if that's something better discussed offline, that's fine too. But I'm just, while it's top of mind, I thought I'd ask.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So to just give you some background on this, as we were in line to get 1.6 million, I guess that's why the
Twice.
Twice. That wasn't given to us by the state. Um, that's kind of where that number came from. Um, we were contacted pretty late in the game. Uh, this year, I reached out and it took a while for someone to get back to me. There was some talk of an early bonding bill maybe this year, which now looks a little futile, but I don't know, just looking at what's going on at the state capitol. Um, and so we tried to rush a little bit on this and not have, we took what was asked last year, which was the first 1.6 million. And we pretty much just turned that around and asked for it again. Um, there was some money there for, uh, in the first proposal for the blocks, for the city block, the three city blocks, the public works amount. And then there was some money in there for the, um, to look at the city campus and police department and thing. Well, that was done, so that's been paid for. So we can't go after that amount. So we added Site Park to it, just to try to bring a park effect, because that has been on the minds of a lot of people, which we understand. When, in discussing this with, with our legislators, they said that a lot of times with these bonding bills, they like to have matching monies. And so that's where the 3.2 million or a little bit more than that, we looked at matching. That was that second request. So we put some things in there that we could, that are issues within the city that we have to look at at some point and figure out. And so if we can do that, and the one thing to keep in mind, this would, if it is given to the city, it's a four-year implementation, so we can do different things at different times. We can rush and do certain things right up front, right? So there's a timeline uh, for using the state bonding funds. And then at the end, the last one was more of a, we sat down and had discussions with the Budget Committee and that was just something, hey, why don't we just throw that out there? So we did. And all of this has been turned over. Now typically, we'd have until like May, no, was it May, March?
I think, I think, yeah, it was at least until the spring.
Yeah. So it was in spring that the typical bonding bill is being discussed. So you have time to have your, you know, city blocks looked at and some specific numbers and maybe come back and forth to council a couple of times. And I think that did occur with the first 1.6 million. We have some backing on that and some approvals from council for that part of it with the expansion at Public Works and, uh, the three city blocks that was done by, uh, WSB. I mean, it would just became, I reached out to Allison and she's like, well, here's what the project probably costs right now. Um, just doing some number crunching and, and some construction cost increases. Okay. So that's kind of where we came up with our numbers. And again, I, I was given this early, mid-December-ish by the time we were able to make contact and have these discussions. And then it was, well, I need it January. I'm like, well, that was even prior to our council meeting now. So we're bringing it here and I told, we haven't, we haven't heard back from the legislators yet, so I'm not sure which one they're going to accept and try to move forward. And so that's why we don't have a resolution for you right now until we know which one, in my mind anyway, which one we want to go with. And then we can bring that back to you. But these are all issues within our city that we're dealing with, that we need to look at in our near, near, probably near future. As far as scope and planning and what things look like out there, so.
Oh, thank you. That
Does that help?
That does help a lot. Thank you.
But that, yeah, we didn't just grab these numbers out of the air and so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So I'd like to, um, start by thanking city staff for their work on this particular topic. One of the criticisms that we take up here, um, is, why aren't you asking the state for money? Why aren't you asking the state for money? And, and it's often from the other side of this made to sound like, oh, this is just a slam dunk, you know? And it's not. And one of the things I like about this is this is setting the background for whatever other city around us does, which is they have a legislative priority every year. They do it different. Like I know Maple Grove has a a literally a bonding breakfast that they invite all the legislators to, so they can present this information. We have asked for, for funds before. We're receipt, we've received bonding, commitment of bonding funds, only to find out, so this is a historical thing for you, that, um, because we didn't wait to do it, because we really couldn't wait to do it, that all of a sudden that 1.6 million was not eligible to be reimbursed to us. So, um, I know specifically our Senator for our area is very much on trying to still get that fulfilled, because that money was allocated. It's just really been sitting there. And, you know, potentially spent someplace else, but still sitting there and trying to make that go. So, I look forward to this as kind of being the first real organized way. And I want to thank city staff for doing that because I think we didn't know what we didn't know, right? So we just always kind of assumed that, well, we didn't assume anything. We just didn't know how this process is and what they needed to be active. You know, and that 1.6 was a, that we got was a tremendous amount of effort from our city staff at the time. And actually, one of the people that really spearheaded this was City Administrator back when he was just filling in one day for the City Administrator being out and the Senator called and said, I need all this information, like, you know, tomorrow. And then we turned this around legitimately in less than 48 hours to, to get to that. So being prepared and asking for this is a huge step forward. I don't know that specifically we need to necessarily rank any of this stuff, but to, um, Assistant City Administrator Vickerman's point, definitely the legislator like, legislature likes to see where cities have some stake in the game. And that's usually a lot more to go forward with. But when we spoke about this on Budget and Finance, and definitely look forward to your addition to this, Mr. Mayor. Like, we, we'll put them all out there. If you don't ask, you're going to get nothing. So if we put them all out there, then they're probably going to toss some of them, but at least they're there. Versus us not even giving to them, because who, who knows what's going to happen? And that's the legislature, right? You just never know how, what's going to get legs and what's not going to get legs. So, um, I just wanted to thank city staff because this is an important, this is a very important product that came out of there that really sets the standard for making sure we're doing all of this proactively so that, you know, come 2026 legislative session, then we can have all this stuff buttoned up by, you know, November, maybe, or maybe even October as we continue to move through. So I just wanted to say thank you because this is not something we've ever done before. And this, based on resident feedback and different things like that, this is a really important first step forward to not only show them that what we're doing is potentially going to be effective, but we have to create the ask. If we don't create the ask, we're never going to get anything.
Yeah, I, I think in the past, we haven't been, we haven't done this formal over process.
Right. And so it always left us behind the eight ball, so to speak.
And it was scrambling to get the information, so. Trying to, as it was stated, have a more formal ask every year to kind of be on their plates. And you've submitted all these already?
Yes, I have, I've sent them to, um, our Senate, our Senator's Legislative Aid, and they have yet to review and say which one they really, um, would encourage us to get behind. But just in conversations, it seems, um, it, it's, it seems more like they, there's a, there's a specific bullet point on uh, those proposals that they want to know, do you have matching funds and, and where are those? Where do they come from? So.
And it's, it's also important to say that we actually do have the matching funds to do this. So it's not like we have to scramble or do anything like that. We actually have in the various applicable funds, the funds necessary to meet this.
Yeah. And again, it's a four-year cycle.
And that, yep. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, but that was something that our Senator said that we, we have to come up with a schedule of what we're going to do when and that way, it, it's, it's not to the date, but it is something where we would have to come up with a schedule and it is a four-year return. And then they just want to make sure within the four years that these projects we've identified are done. And that the money's been spent. So if we have to raise money to cover one of the projects, or if we're looking at having to bond or anything like, if, let's say this 28 million, they're like, well, we'll give you 14. Um, then we would have to start looking at ways of making that work within the next four years. So it's not just, it has to be done tomorrow. Which I think is very helpful for city staff and council to make sure that we're doing it right the first time and making sure we have everything we need.
Do we need some type of letter of support from the council?
Yes, we specifically need to have that resolution, which is, would come to, it's not in this packet. It would be a future resolution. Supporting which, which option you all decide you want to put forward. That's, they would be looking for that.
You're also waiting feedback though from the legislator, which one they think they can get behind more. And then that'll be the resolution that'll come forward.
Exactly, yes.
Yes.
Just as a, just as a matter of thirdness, when we don't have the resolution, um, I think it would be probably helpful to staff to have some consensus from us and a non, non, well, we could be, we could put a motion to support if we wanted to do that. Just so that they have the working. So when they ask, when the state gets back to them and asks them, you know, does your council support this? Well, we think they might, but we're not really sure. And, you know, blah, blah, blah. So, um, for what it's worth, I mean, I, I'm willing to throw support behind all of these. And then let the, let the city staff and the state just kind of work out the details as they can.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm of the same mind that, um, I don't see anything wrong with any of these three. Given that we have a really good bond rating and if, you know, if we actually got what we really wished for, which is the 28 million, and we got to come up with 14, yeah, it's going to be tough, but we've got a lot of smart folks on staff, got a lot of smart folks in the community, got a lot of smart folks up here. I think it'd be really worth finding that 14 mil if the state's going to kick out. Now, obviously that's the shoot for the moon that I was referring to earlier. But I would agree, there's, I don't see anything wrong with either getting behind any of these three. And I would support, if that was a resolution, I would support them.
Yeah, I think free to bring forth what they think they're going to get done.
Yep. And I really appreciate that. That helps us a lot that you're behind us and that we can tell the Senator that, even though it may not be official, we can definitely tell them that we'll be able to get that done next council meeting for sure.
Yeah, whichever one.
Yep. And I'm hoping to have that feedback. So that's the whole.
On this. I mean, it's
Yeah, this is, this is, this is huge. This is, this is something that, um, took a lot of time to put together and it's nice to see this first thing. We'll learn the process a lot more. Um, so I just, I can't say enough about how I appreciate what the city staff was able to put together for this.
Yeah, even maybe this fall or, you know, have her, have her breakfast and present them at, you know, try to get into that cadence of their kind of workflow. So we're up in front of it more often.
Absolutely. I just wrote that down too, by the way, so.
Yep. Okay. So are you good on that one?
Yep.
Okay.
Very much so.
All right, 11E, approve insurance opt-out. M O U, please.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, what we're asking for tonight is to approve a memorandum of understanding um, with Law Enforcement Labor Services Local 182 for the change in the opt-out from insurance payout amount that we, uh, had in our 2025 budget. So the health insurance payment, payment right now for the opt-out is $600 per month within the contract. And since, um, I felt that we're going to get into that contract later this year, but to cover everything and make sure that the officers are on the same with the rest of city staff, that we would have a memorandum of understanding, that we would be paying that opt-out cost per month of 1475, which was put into the budget for all city staff. Um, and I feel that that is the intent that I was told of, uh, back when we'd, um, did the budget. It was brought up and we talked about it. Um, and the police officers, they're def, they were definitely affected. So this will be for short term, short term, since this is a negotiation year, um, for that contract. And then we can get it actually in the language of the contract for, uh, the future years as time comes on.
And again, just so people, it was a budget savings to go this route. When they look at six to 14, it's like, oh, you're spending, it was saving money by doing it this way.
Yes.
So people understand that.
Yes.
Okay, questions on that? Now we look for a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to, um, approve the, um, memo of understanding?
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the insurance opt-out memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the police department. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, just one question. Again, new guy question. So how does this impact any potential future negotiations since you had mentioned that this is a negotiation year? Is this something the union's going to see as favorable? Is it
Yes.
innocuous with, um, how, how do they see this?
Yeah, our union sees it as very favorable. What the city has been able to put together currently and with our budget talks and our budget, um, outlook from this 2024 to 2025, um, I've heard nothing but good things from all city staff. So they're very happy. They're, I mean, some were ecstatic just because we were able to solve some little issues within our insurance areas and that, that was really a, a great thing that the city was able to do. So, um, we're, they're all grateful.
And our little issues, as you just
Sorry?
I said in our little issues, as you point out, are huge issues for them.
Yeah. That, yeah, and this, this was just a great pro- That, yeah, and this, this was just a great pro-worker-type issue that really helps out our staff, like, I mean, just, they're beyond ecstatic, so it was a real good resolution.
And again, Councilmember Torres, for background, too, we've done this multiple times in this contract. We've opened it up, added stuff and support, which have all been, you know, favorable on, from the union side of things, so I mean, this isn't any different.
Mr. Mayor, so, and you can't, I mean, directly to your question, you know, when these, these, because I think, gosh, how many contracts have I helped negotiate? Three or four? And it all breaks down to the fancy Latin term of quid pro quo. And so I think we're in a much, we're in a really good position, because we've acknowledged and seen some of the challenges specific to our police force, and we've met and exceeded probably their expectations several times. So I'm hoping that it buys us some goodwill, but, you know, those first round negotiations are always a little tenuous.
Oh, yeah.
You just have to negotiate with that guy. That was fun.
No, thank you, everybody, for the, for the education on that.
Hope that helped.
Helps me understand, you know, which way I'm gonna go with this.
So we've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, three to zero. All right, 11F, approve joint powers agreement renewal with embedded social worker.
So the embedded social worker program for our city with our police department has been, is the only way for Oseo that can afford to access an on-call social worker. This social worker program's with Hennepin County, their emergency communication center. It is something that we've had since the middle of 2023, so since June of 2023, we have made 50 referrals to that social worker program in the last year and a half. They've assisted our officers with some real-time information, gave officers information on best practices, and offered help to those in mental health crises, along with housing crisis, job crisis, helping with getting people the help, whether it's with getting them on state assistance. They've done many great things as far as our people within our city that our police department is coming into contact with. It has, you know, laid the groundwork for future expansion, and hopefully agreements to provide these services to all of Hennepin County in the future. And this agreement was looked over by the city attorney's office and approved. There was no issues. So we'd just like to approve that joint powers agreement as written, is what we're looking for.
Questions, council? Now we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of joint powers agreement with Hennepin County for embedded social worker.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the joint powers agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Having read through this earlier, I just really want to show support for the mental health and care of those who serve in a very hard capacity. Mental health, you know, being a veteran, I can understand the need for mental health care. It's not anything to be ashamed of, and I think it's really great that the city is doing this, and just can't say enough, fully support this, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
In addition, one of the things that I really like about this is, you know, our police department is really good at a lot of things, but being able to help navigate special services and accessibility for the residents of our community is not necessarily a strong suit. So having this, and I was surprised that we've had 50 referrals in literally half a year, so this seems to make a lot of sense, because it's a, it's a very responsible, manageable cost way to make sure that people are getting the help that they deserve. So thank you for originally pushing us into this original thing and for bringing it back up again tonight.
Yeah, agreed, and especially, I hadn't even mentioned that, but that's a good point that Councilmember Schultz makes about no impact to the budget. I mean, it's a win-win all the way around.
Is it zero impact or minimal?
It's zero impact. This is a free service that we are joint powers with them, so.
I mean, it would be, be a valuable service either way, but-
It would be.
The cost on this one's pretty nice.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, three to zero. All right, 11G, approve council payable. Questions on that?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pay the bills.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's council payables. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, three to zero. All right, Administrator report. Administrator Michelson?
I have nothing to report.
Assistant Administrator Vickerman?
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay, number 13, council and attorneys report. Attorney Techen?
Mayor, I wanted to just follow up quickly on Councilmember Schultz's point about the cannabis uses in the commercial, highway commercial district, C2. It does allow any uses permitted within the central business district, so that would include any retail businesses that are being proposed to be allowed in the CBD. Otherwise, go to court.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Torres?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody for the honor and privilege of sitting in this chair. This is my first foray into public service at this level. I had a lot of help and support to get here, from the community, from the folks that are sitting up here, and I hope that I can meet the expectations that put me here. I hope that I can add to the camaraderie and build on that camaraderie and add to the future civil nature of a functioning body. I want to thank the people of Oseo for their support. In fact, I'm looking at someone right now. It was encouragement and support. I just, I can't thank everybody enough for that. I'm looking forward to working with everybody, with staff and with council and with our mayor, and I'm excited about the future and to those folks that are watching. It's such a great community we have. I mean, it's the type of community that's worth fighting for, and I don't think it's a big fight, but we gotta do what we gotta do to keep this, keep this awesome, awesome city running. So with that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
So I'd like to welcome Councilmember Torres aboard. I'll welcome Councilmember Cook when he gets here next time. I really appreciate your comments. You know, it's, it's been a long road. I mean, you, you ended up here because you wanted to help buck the system, okay? As I've told you personally, I really appreciated the way in which you did that. You were always very respectful. That's not necessarily what we get here. I think it's what we deserve, but it's not necessarily what we get here. So I appreciate your understanding and your acceptance of stepping up to the challenge. I do look forward to working with you, have kind of a chance to know you a lot better over the last several months. Look forward to working with you on the different committees and helping mitigate some of the volume of water from the fire hose you're about to drink through, you know? So that's always, that's always awesome. Looking forward to a really good year. I appreciate your comments regarding civility and cohesiveness. That always makes our lives a lot easier. It's nice not to have to come up here preparing for a fight every single time and, you know, that kind of stuff. So I'm really looking forward to the direction of what this council is gonna be able to accomplish in the next couple of years. We've already seen some significant leaps forward in the last six months compared to how the city functions, and I look forward to that continuing on into the future. And congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, on, is this your eighth?
Seventh.
Seventh term, so. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, welcome, Councilmember Torres. Happy to have you on board. All right, moving on, number 14 announcements. City Hall will be closed for Martin Luther King Day on Monday, January 20th, and commission members are still needed for open seats in the commissions and committees, so if you have an interest, please submit a letter of interest to the city hall, and we'll get those appointments soon for the, for the commissions and committees. So with that, moving on to number 15, adjournment.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilmember Schultz. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Torres, non-negotiable. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, three to zero. We're adjourned at 8:39. Thank you.
So the current score of the Vikings game is Vikings 3, Rams 23.